Hi there, we're back in session. We're going to move on to item number two, which is Code Enforcement Volunteer Sign Removal Program. Mr. Barnot.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're really excited to be here this morning. The code enforcement team has come up with a plan and a concept. I really think it's a good one, and I really think the community will embrace it. But here to tell us about it is Mr. Short timer, George Martella. Today is George's last day.
Oh, my gosh.
He will be retiring to spend time with his lovely wife and grandkids, and this is one of his last official duties until he signs off this afternoon on the radio. George?
Thank you, John.
You want us to make it tough on him, John?
Yes.
Really have to.
It probably wouldn't matter.
Why don't we just improve this in honor of- Good morning. I'm George Martella with Code Enforcement. And what I'd like to do is, obviously, just for information purposes at this time, no action is required. As you know, we have a problem, a daily problem with snipe signs in the county. You know, we get calls, we get emails, and so, and I know that you all get the same thing and pass it down to us. So what we've done is Hillsborough County instituted a plan in 2012 where citizens, they utilize citizens to help them remove snipe signs. Since the program was inceptioned in 2012, they've been very successful. They removed about 9,000 signs per year.
Goodness.
This is just the citizens. So as you can see, they make an impact. After reviewing the Hillsborough model, we saw the value, and so the Code Enforcement Division is proposing this volunteer program that will replicate Hillsborough's program, and it'll assist us in removing snipe signs here in the county from the obviously unincorporated areas of the county. In 2017 and 2018, the Manti County Code Enforcement Division removed 17,057 signs from the right-of-way. Through October of this past year, we have removed 8,444 signs. The goal is to partner with members of the public to support the Code Enforcement Division in this endeavor. The program would obviously greatly enhance our enforcement efforts. Some of the potential benefits to Manti County, it would save staff time and money. It would create a spirit of community. It would foster a positive relationship between code enforcement and the citizens of Manti County. As you know, when the code enforcement officer goes out, it's usually to address some type of violation, so hopefully this program will, you know, educate, help educate the public and the volunteers of our efforts. The Code Enforcement Division would manage and monitor the program, which would include training and education of the volunteers, issuing of equipment. We would maintain reports and statistics, so we have some measurables of the success of the program. We would assign the zones. We would prepare schedules, and we would conduct background checks on all the individuals that will be assisting us. And one of those, not a concern, but it is something that we should be aware of, is if they're working near a school zone or something like that, so we'll have to, we'll do that, and it's something that Hillsborough County conducts.
Oh, okay.
So the Manti County sign ordinance is under Section 600 of the Land Development Code, and the purpose of the section is to provide minimum standards to protect the public health and safety and welfare, provide consistent and non-discriminatory sign standards, design to make Manti County safer by reducing safety hazards, enhancing development and maintenance of an attractive visual environment while facilitating the communication of a message to the public, and to avoid an environment that encourages blight. Some of the objectives of our sign ordinance is to improve pedestrian and traffic safety, lessen visual clutter, allow and encourage signs appropriate to the zoning district in which they are located and consistent with the use and function, categorize and regulate signs based on function, allow for the identification of businesses, residential and public uses, and recognize the commercial communication requirements of all sectors of the business community.
You guys are good with the computer.
Fancy.
Yes, I got a little fancy there. So specifically, what we enforce in that code is Section 604, which is the prohibited signs, and, you know, obviously abandoned signs, signs that imitate or resemble traffic or government signs, signs in the public right-of-way, specifically, public lands except for government signs, signs in the visibility triangle, which obviously is a safety issue, signs causing traffic or any other hazard, signs that emit audible sound, vapor, smoke, other odor particles, and gaseous materials, signs that have unshielded illuminated devices, signs that cause radio, television, and other communication interference, signs that obstruct any firefighting, and flashing signs. This part of the presentation is something that, what we would use, obviously, you all know what a snipe sign is, but this is what we would present to the volunteers to educate them as part of their education program. What's a snipe sign? Well, that's any sign that's implanted in the ground or attached in any way to a utility pole, tree, fence post, or any other object located on public property. It is not a sign designed to provide warning to the public and shall now be construed as a snipe sign. What is the right-of-way? The right-of-way is publicly owned property where all county utilities and equipment provided by private companies, electric poles, lights, cable, water meters, et cetera, installed. And we tell them, we'll tell them, if you have any doubt as to whether or not the sign is within any public right-of-way, leave it. The last thing we want to do is pull it from private land, and so we're going to err on the side of caution, and that is leave the sign. And then we stress the fact that never remove a sign from public property, excuse me, private Some of the safety hazards that they'll encounter out there, environmental, which will be, you know, some depressions maybe on the sidewalk or the ground, defective sidewalks, embankments, high grass, wet grass, fire ants, snakes, rodents, vehicle or traffic, utilize the parking lots, side streets and shoulder, or, excuse me, road shoulders to remove your vehicle from the traffic flow. One of the things that we're also going to stress is, we don't want the volunteers going in the medium at busy highways, because, you know, that, we're creating then a safety hazard for our volunteers. So they're mostly be working from parking lots, you know, walking over to the sides of the road. Anything on the medium, that'll be left to a code enforcement officer to remove, because that just requires a little bit more of a safety tactic, and we don't want anybody getting hurt over a sign. It's also important to note that some of these signs, before removal, there's been instances where they put fluid, you know, on the signs, sharp objects, and other impediments on the signs that'll hurt the code enforcement officer. We've had, in other areas, I don't think we've had it here, since I've been here, I've only been here six years, but that we've had somebody hurt, but I know in our classes, they put razor blades on the signs, so when you try to get them up, you know, you'll cut yourself. So it's something that I know other counties have, you know, ran into that unfortunately.
Really? Wow.
Removing the signs, obviously, pull them, detach the sign from the poles, work in their own neighborhood and traffic areas, no busy highways, like I just stated. The idea is to encourage people, we will, we'll get the word out, part of the word we'll get out is through HOA meetings that we attend regularly, and the idea is to get the people in those neighborhoods, kind of adopt the neighborhood, if you would, so to speak, and work out from their, from the places that they live. So, you know, in that aspect, we'll eventually, hopefully, you know, be able to reach a lot of the neighborhoods, and so they'll be able to take pride in their own neighborhood and expand out. The safety equipment would be gloves, a safety vest, a pole, and an ID. This is just, I'm removing the signs. Safety equipment, the vest. Disposal location, we'll have one central disposal location, which will be in Main Fleet, which is open 24/7, and obviously is located in Arrow on 26th Avenue East. One of the ideas that we're tossing around, and we haven't fine tuned it yet, is to keep people from going to the central location, maybe have them, them keep it in a location where, in their neighborhood, and we will go and retrieve the signs. So that makes it a little bit easier on the volunteers, so they don't have to be going over to 26th Street or anything like that, because one of the things that we need to do as part, when we remove a sign, is to break the sign down. What I mean by that is remove either the cardboard or the plastic from the metal, so it's properly disposed at the, at the, excuse me, at the dumpster. So the cost savings, this is a conservative estimate that we had, average pay for our staff of 13 officers is about $19 an hour. The code enforcement division devotes one hour a day, Monday through Friday, and our weekend officer spends four hours per weekend picking up illegal signs. The hour that we dedicate Monday through Friday is usually in the morning, but sometimes it's, you know, throughout the day, we'll take an hour and we'll enforce the snipe sign ordinance. And sometimes what we'll do is too, if we get a lot of complaints, we'll focus, we'll do a little task force, if you would, and focus on a specific area and blitz it and clear all the signs. Unfortunately, as you all know, we remove them and literally that night, or that early next morning, the signs will be back up there, especially with our repeat offenders, tax people, and that, things like that, which I want to say, it's not part of this, but I want to interject on it, that we take action, enforcement action, against the people that are repeat offenders that we can identify, so we can serve them either with a notice of violation and/or a notice to appear or citation. Obviously, we can't track them all down, but the repeat offenders that are consistent, we've had some success with that, and so we've issued citations and notices to appear. Our staff of 13 officers devotes approximately 3,380 hours per year at $19 an hour, is $64,220. The weekend officer, 188 hours, times 19 is 3572, for a total annual cost of $67,792. The approximate cost of outfitting a volunteer would be, with the gloves, vest, hat, and a background check, is about $60. So what are our next steps? Our next steps, obviously, would be going through risk management and the county attorney for, you know, for approval there. Outreach, besides the HOAs, I've talked with Neighborhood Services Debbie DeLeon, who we all know, and she was telling me that they have an app called Next Door App, and a connection newsletter that reaches about 80,000 citizens in the county. So I think that would be a great way to do an outreach, obviously the county website, and also with Nick Azera and information I've reached there. So that's basically what the concept is, what the idea is, and I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you for a great presentation, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
You get to take your name thing if you want.
Thank you.
Got some questions up here. Commissioner Trace.
Actually, I think it's a great thing, if, at the county, I was going to ask Mickey, how liable are we, and I see you haven't actually been able to answer that question yet, but I think it's great unless it's a huge liability to us that we haven't thought through yet. Mickey?
We, of course, anticipate receipt of the appropriate request for legal services from the department, but I can comment in general that this is a quite manageable risk. In anticipation of this line of questioning, I've pulled up Florida Statute 125.9504, which mandates all local government, mandates county governments to provide workers' compensation coverage for all of their official volunteers. Now, official is an important word there. We need to be certain that we have a registration system where we, as you say, where we screen these people.
Yes, sir.
They fill out an application.
Yes, sir.
I think that we've been somewhat inconsistent over the years, because the volunteer programs are kind of handled on a department-by-department basis. I think we've been a little bit inconsistent over the years in terms of getting volunteers to sign liability waiver forms, but that's something else that can be examined. But, yeah, this is a manageable risk.
And I'd say, go for it. That's my opinion, great idea.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Whitmore.
We've probably had thousands of volunteers throughout the years. I know Charlie's department has hundreds and hundreds, Animal Services has them, and my concerns were, were the workman's comp, and you've just addressed that, and they would be driving their own cars, so what kind of insurance are you going to require? Just the basic liability or the full coverage? And that'll be up to you guys and the attorney, and Tampa, you may want to, you know, we should at least look and see what they're doing too, and see how they're handling that. Staff, our current in-house staff would handle the scheduling of the volunteers, because, correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay. When somebody that's not an employee of the county but speaks on behalf of employee, would you require, or are you going to consider, I don't know what they do in Tampa, would take a snapshot of when they remove the sign, so if somebody contested, they can say it was totally in the right-of-way? You probably don't do that for code enforcement, you may not do it for this, but it was just a thought when I was going through. And getting the word out to the volunteers was great, I wrote that down too, especially with Nick and everybody, and that Next Door App is great.
Yes, ma'am.
The only issue I had, and when I was reading this this weekend, I saw it, and it kind of sticks out for some of us, is all signs taking off of right-of-way, which I get, and county properties unless they're a governmental sign. So that means like, you know, property praiser, this is his office. And again, I go back to the sticky situation about political signs, not on the right-of-ways, but we do have political signs at the supervisor of elections, and I know we still haven't come to a resolution on that, I don't think. We bring it up every election year, every year, when we talk about signs, and if we allow it there, we have to allow it everywhere on our, on our personal property, so, but again, you did mention it in this presentation, so I am bringing it up again, and that's something that we as a board have to figure out what to do. If we want to allow our signs on county property, then we have to allow it on, everybody to put signs on our county property, and I think that's what the attorneys had said in the past, right, Mickey? Oh, we don't want to go there, we know it's a sticky subject, and we'll talk about it again, but right now, on this-
Thank you, Commissioner, for reading me.
Yeah, on this handout that I read this weekend, it hasn't gone away, so.
I can address that. This program's designed for signs in the right-of-way.
It says county property.
... property and taking signs, I don't care what type of snipe sign it is in public right-of-way.
Your mic's not on, John. He's saying your mic's not on.
He's coming.
Here he comes.
Must have timed down.
Whoa.
All right, you know, we remove signs from the public right-of-way every day. We're not going on private property and doing that. And the whole intent of the program is to, you know, and we've already had some communication and discussion with Mickey's staff about volunteers, because we do have volunteer programs around the county and other areas. And our intent today is to, if we get a good read from the board that, you know, we think that's a good idea, we will continue to move forward and answer and address all these issues that you're bringing up, all of them good.
Good, because you brought it in your presentation, and that's just why I want to make sure.
We see a major benefit to people adopting their neighborhood, and that's all we want them to do. We do not want people on State Route 70, or the interstate, or any other major thoroughfare out there collecting signs. That's not our intent. Keep your neighborhood clean. And each zone officer works very hard with the people in that neighborhood. They all know them. You'd be surprised, you can go to any, almost any neighborhood in Manti County, who's your code enforcement officer? They know them. We've taken steps to identify the vehicles that we are code enforcement, so we're not mixed up with, you know, someone from another department, you know, all county trucks are white, so we've got a designation on them, there says code enforcement. It's working well, and, you know, I think this is a good program. It lets the community get involved, because the complaints we get, people want to say, I'd love just to go out there and pick all these signs up. Legally, they can't do that. With this program, they could.
Good.
Madam Chair, if I might, I stated a little bit differently, John, you correct me if this is a misstatement. This program is focusing only on that subset of county properties that constitute road right-of-way, correct?
That's correct.
Doesn't include property like the property that we're sitting on right now.
No, sir.
Or properties that are, whatever, whatever property it may be that is county-owned. We're focusing only on the subset of county properties that constitute road right-of-way, correct?
That's correct.
You need to change your handout then, because it doesn't say that.
I apologize, that would be my fault.
Oh, no, no. It just says what the law is.
Commissioner Servie.
Great presentation. Congratulations, George. I'm so sorry that you're leaving, though, I'm going to miss you.
Thank you.
So just to follow up on what Mr. Barnot said, so he said, we don't want people yanking signs out of State Route 70 right-of-way.
Right.
State Route 70 right-of-way is a part of the Pride Park area that we have some of the biggest problems. So, but, so that's what I hear. Do I hear no state right-of-way? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we will, I'm sorry, go ahead, John, I apologize.
We're very concerned with a volunteer being on a major busy highway.
Sure.
Stopping in a lane, putting on their flashers, getting out and picking up sign. We don't want that.
What if they walk?
And George has alluded to already, if you can pull in the parking lot and walk over there and get the sign, that's fine, but you can't, you know, create a situation. I feel more comfortable with our professional code enforcement officers regulating those areas, and keep your neighborhood clean.
Okay, so, but is there a prohibition from us removing signs in state rights-of-way? I know those are generally larger roads.
No, not to my knowledge.
We will have the authority to do that under this program. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And just a thought, we have gone away from acquiring as much right-of-way as we used to in the past, and instead we're getting utility easements. So have we thought about that, and does that present a problem? Just throwing that out there. I don't think we want signs in our utility easements either.
Correct.
But I think it's going to be a different, a different criteria, perhaps.
Good point, we'll follow up on that.
Okay. I was glad to see that on the weekends, that this will be enforced, because that's when we have most of the problems. So on the weekends, signs are put out Saturday early and picked up Sunday before sunset. So those should be handled through this new program. I'm glad you brought up campaign signs, because I do know that the law treats them differently. They're a little bit different. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that whatever our ordinance is, that it addresses them as the law does.
Okay, and put them in right-of-way.
I would like to see recycling of the signs, because they are recyclable, both the metal and the cardboard, and we, I know that we have at least one place that does it.
I told they weren't. Oh, they are?
I, I believe, I know that when we put them in the dumpsters, they're put in separate dumpsters, I'm thinking for that reason, but I'm not sure. I mean, we have a metal dumpster that all we put is metal, and we have a dumpster that all we put is paper and plastic, so, but I don't know, Commissioner, what the end result of that is, but I'm assuming that the reason we separated it at that point is to be at recycling purposes.
Right, so those typical signs that we're all familiar with, that Sun Graphics produces, for example, the, what do you call it?
What's it called?
Corrugated cardboard type thing?
Yeah, corrugated board.
Yeah, corrugated, thank you.
So that is recyclable, and I know Sun Graphics will take it. So we might be able to partner with them and maybe get something going, or we could drop them off there. And then we already talked about risk management, I wrote that down. Great, sounds like a great program.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm actually next on the board, I just had a couple of questions. Again, great presentation, you guys have put a lot of thought, you've covered this very, very well, I think.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that, and anytime that we can work with our citizens in cleaning up their neighborhoods, they're going to love it, you know, they really, they want to have a part, and, you know, we have some great homeowner associations that work really hard, and, you know, they're the real soldiers out there along with you guys. I just wondered, have you ever run into a situation where people argue with you, or do you ever have somebody, you know, kind of-
The garage sales.
Come at you when you're doing this?
Oh, yeah.
They've been less than cordial.
Yes. Less than cordial, that was good. Good work.
We have, we, yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, Commissioner, the answer is yes, ma'am, we have. Not to the point where, I personally had an issue with, a few years back, there was on State Route 70 where they were having a sale at a furniture store, and they had a bunch of little snipes on out there.
Remember that place?
Garage sales, or whatever sales.
Yeah, and so, and the gentleman there, again, was, used choice words, questioned my background and my birthright and all that, so, but we got it, we got it all, all straightened out, and we removed the signs, and what I did is I, besides removing the signs, I went to management and explained to them, because not only, a lot of times, people don't know, and so part of our job too is to educate the public, and so we, I educated the, excuse me, the store owner, the manager, and the problem was solved.
And so I would hope we would, when we were working with the public, that we'd say, hey, look, somebody's getting in your face, just walk away, we'll handle it for you, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And when we have some signs, for example, let's say Dunkin' Donuts, and I know I'm taking a little bit of time, but, you know, we will pick them up, and we take them inside, because signs are expensive, but we just educate them, look, you can't have them out here on the right-of-way, you can have them in your parking lot, but you just can't have them there. So they appreciate that. So, you know, you get a lot more with honey than you do with vinegar, and that's some of the things we try to pride ourselves in.
I agree with you. And actually, that was going to be my other question, because I thought, I recall, that there was an opportunity to pick up signs somewhere, so if you're picking up a bunch of somebody's signs, that they could actually go pick them up. But is this, in fact, if it's in the right-of-way, is it our property, and if they don't get an opportunity to pick it up, we can destroy it? Has there been a legal opinion on that?
Our current ordinance requires us to hold the signs for ten days.
Okay.
The new sign ordinance will bring it forward, we're changing that to say-
He turned it off again.
Asking the board to, we want from away media, we don't want to hold on to them.
Okay. Well, then, at that point, I guess I want a legal interpretation about, you know, make sure that nobody had come back, I'd say, that was my property you destroyed, so, I guess I'll-
We can do that.
... a list of other jurisdictions that do not hold on to the signs for any length of time.
Okay.
Any time long.
Okay. My city doesn't. All right, Commissioner Baugh?
Yeah, sorry, Misty brought up about state law and how political signs do have different laws, and I know that is true. So I guess, Mickey, I'm going to, I'm going to look back at you, state law supersedes local laws, is that correct? When it comes to political signs?
If there's a conflict between a state statute and a local ordinance, the state statute prevails.
Okay, so, John, do we know, when we're talking about political signs, I'm assuming that we've looked at that, and what you're looking to do is, corresponds with state law?
Yes.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Trace.
Well, I understand that those political signs are not allowed in the right-of-way.
Correct.
That is correct, Commissioner.
So, I mean-
That is correct.
So, so, so this is not a case, this, we're only talking about right-of-way, so if you put a political sign in the right-of-way, that is illegal today.
Let it be known, I've not ever done it. Let it be known, I've not ever done it.
I've never done it myself, you know, but I'm just saying.
Covering myself now.
Nor have I, but I just meant, we're talking about that. That is still the, the law on, on political signs in the right-of-way.
Okay. Commissioner Trace, did you?
Nope, nope, nope.
All right, that's the last comment I had. I think you've heard that, you know, we appreciate the work, we look forward to this program coming forward. Uh, we, we do appreciate all the work you guys do. We know that you're out there sometimes, you know, and it's such an aesthetic issue, but we live in a beautiful county, we want to keep it beautiful, so, thank you for all that you're doing, and stay safe out there.
And good luck on your retirement, George. Yay!
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, just a quick suggestion to the gentleman. Um, you know, your, your, your program criteria might ju- might contain a prohibition of your volunteers entering the way of travel. And that would keep them out of the medians. Clearly, they have to enter the way of travel in order to get to a median.
Gotcha.
So, just a thought, you know, that they are, they are restricted to roadside activities that are outside of the actual way of travel. Just a suggestion in terms of your program, program rules and criteria.
And we've accomplished what we came to do today. The board likes the program, so we will continue. There are a lot of things that we need to do between now and the inception or the creation of this program to its end. And George got it started, and will continue to carry it forward. There's a lot of issues we have yet to cover. You know, one of our biggest concerns is safety of the volunteers.
Right.
Yeah, good, absolutely.
And there, I'm sure there's gonna be a, a detailed guide on the do's and don'ts as a volunteer. So, you know, these guys have really worked hard on this, and I applaud them for their effort to, to work with the citizens of Manatee County to keep our community clean. So, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, George.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Go forward and have fun.
Yeah, have good retirement.
Okay, next up, we're gonna talk about video inspections, Building and Development Services. Mr. Barnot?
Yes, another great thing that, that these folks have done in Building and Development Services, particularly the inspection group. I'm very proud of the effort and the creativity that they've used to create this program and do the things they're doing.
Thank you.
Um, today, we average almost sixty to seventy mechanical change-outs a day in Manatee County. That means someone's changing out their AC unit every day. And most of you here have probably changed yours out. Well, what did you have to do after the unit was changed out? You had to wait there possibly all day for an inspector to show up to do a three-to-five-minute inspection. That's very inconvenient for our citizens, very inconvenient for our contractors, our customers. And one of the things that we decided to do is, how can we eliminate this problem? And these folks came up with an idea. This concept is gonna revolutionize inspections across the country. Not just the state of Florida, but across the country. And with that, CJ and Pat are here to talk about it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're very excited to share with you, um, our video inspection program that we have created. It's the first of its kind in the state of Florida. In fact, I've checked around, and I believe it's the first of its kind in the country.
Wow.
We're very proud of it. This was inspired by a conversation John and I were having, and he said, "Why do we need to drive around all over the county knocking on people's doors to get these air conditioners inspected?" So, we came up with, uh, with a process and worked on it. Uh, Pat and I presented the program, put together a program, and presented it to the Building Code Administrators and Inspectors Board, uh, for state approval. And we got our state approval for this. And, uh, we're looking, uh, forward to, uh, bringing in additional inspections and expanding on our program. I'm proud of our inspections and Building Services, uh, team for their hard work in developing the process. They put together the process for us so that we could move forward with this and get it to the state. And, and with that, I'm just gonna turn it over to Pat, so he can explain to you our process and, and how this program works. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, CJ. I'm glad they made that for me.
Nice, I like that.
I like it, too.
Good morning, I'm Pat Winsell. I'm your constructions review inspections manager. And unlike George, God, good Lord willing, you're gonna have to put up with me for a little bit longer. I'm here to talk to you this morning about, um, an issue that a lot of jurisdictions in the state of Florida, and not only the state of Florida, but the country, has had to deal with for a very long time, and that's open and expired permits. More specifically, in this case, mechanical express permits. And a mechanical express permit is when you call to have your air conditioner changed out, size for size, location for location. It has to meet certain criteria to fall into that category. These issues have been going on for so long that, in this past legislative section, session, legislation was introduced and passed to help deal with open and expired permits. So, not only is it being attacked from the top, we're gonna try and attack it from the bottom, too. The business process that the Bads team has developed will eliminate the, the problem of the open and expired permits. And I'm gonna go through our business process now. Let me see if I can get my, uh...
We're keeping Chris busy today. I think I've already seen that. Tough act to follow. I don't know, first in the country. Oh, yeah, somebody young is doing it.
I apologize, it was, uh.
It's okay.
Bobby put it in.
We're fine.
I know she did it.
She's here, I just saw Bobby, she just stuck her head out.
Yeah, she was here. Anyway.
Yeah, I want to see it.
There it go, maybe?
Not it.
No, that's not it.
Chris, is it in that other drive? The USB drive?
C drive, I can.
That folder?
No, the USB drive folder?
Oh, there, there's no, no flash drive in the computer.
Well, we have it on our, we have it as a attachment to the item, so if you want to just walk us through it.
Public wants, yeah.
You can't bring it up right now.
All right, the, the business process was developed. The Bads team developed a comprehensive, yet friendly business plan. It's easy to follow, and it's gonna benefit the contractor and the customer and the county. It's a win-win-win. It helps everybody. The requirement guide, uh, several members of the inspections team and myself collaborated on the inspections card. You have the inspections card in your folder, it's the blue card. It's very easy to follow, and it's a punch list for the installer. It's exactly what it is. As long as he follows the steps on this card, the inspection's gonna go smoothly. If he follows these, we can approve them. This started out, we were going through several different avenues trying to get this off the ground, and Mr. Barnot had pulled a permit, he pulled a permit to change his AC, and he shot a little video. And we were working with the, um, IT department, trying to get it to where people could upload videos to us, but it just wasn't working with the security that the county has. So, they went out and they found the pro- the, the system Ignite for us. And now, with Ignite, thanks to IT, we send them a link, they email us, we send them a link, and they're good. They don't need another link, they get one link, and they can, they can upload all of their video inspections into Ignite, which I can sit at my desk, and I can do video inspections from my office. Like CJ had told to you, um, he and I went to the Building Code Administrators Board, Inspectors Board. We had our deck, deck statement approved. The customer training, our in-house customer training went on for, twice a week for the first couple of months, with well over two hundred people attending. Also training in the field, going out to individual AC companies and training staff and personnel in the usage of the program. Okay? This has been several hundred people, between on the fifth floor and going out and doing site visits to AC companies and training. In July of 2019, we started in July the first. About eight percent of the inspections in July went to video inspection. In August, four point eight percent went to video inspection. September was sixteen point seven went to video inspection.
Wow.
In October, twenty-five percent were video inspection. November was twenty percent, but the inspection levels came down a little bit in November, like it typically does. This is taking off and growing by leaps and bounds. Everybody that has tried it loves it. There's just, there's, there's, there's no bad feedback from this yet. I say yet, because, you know, there's always gonna be one somewhere. The future is we're gonna try this program with inspections that require a homeowner to have to wait on us. Typically, door and window permits, where an installer will get done, he'll schedule an inspection, and they're gonna have to wait for us to get it into our schedule. And that's another thing about the Ignite system is, the customer will never have to wait at home again, like they said, but the contractor will never have to schedule an inspection. Because once they upload it into Ignite, Ignite notifies us. Once they get their permit, they have no further contact with the county. Ignite does the whole thing. So, there's no contact with the contractor, there's no contact with the homeowner. It's done. It's hands-free. It, it literally is a huge, huge favor for the county.
We should sell it. Copyright it. Yeah.
I would like to talk about the results first, the spark plugs. The video inspection team had the stamina and staying power to see this project through from beginning to end. Our bias to act was the video inspection team were focused on the solution to customer concerns and open and expired permit, mechanical permits. Results orientation, the video inspection team focused on the end result and how this could benefit Building and Development Services, but also have a significant positive effect on the mechanical industry and Manatee County residents. The personal responsibility, each member of the video inspection team took full responsibility for each task assigned. And inclined to teams, the video inspection staff consisted of inspectors, inspection support staff, business services staff, and information technology staff. Each member of this team brought different piece of the engine that got, got it on the road and running. I would like to give a, a huge thanks to Mr. Barnot for encouraging this and, and letting us get this up and running and rolling. To Paul Alexander and his team, Susie McGuire and Mike Hoteley, and all the people in Bads that had their hands in this to help get this off the ground to where we are today. And I'm here for any questions, if you have them.
Cool.
Hey, it's here.
Yeah.
I knew it was there.
It was there someplace. Well, we got, we, it's interesting, we got the, the coolest video inspection, but we can't figure out PowerPoint, so we're gonna have to circle back here somehow.
It wasn't as fancy as George's, but it was there.
Okay. Commissioner Whitmore?
So, from what I gather, is video inspections we're doing with the air conditioning now, that's where we're starting?
Yes.
Okay. On my questions, uh, thank you, everybody, for thinking outside the box. Thank you for letting your team, John, for doing that. And somebody, I heard people up here when you were talking, is, are you copyrighting this program? Or is this a proprietary where we could, um, the county, Manatee County, could benefit from us thinking outside the box? If not, you can talk about it with Sherry and your, the attorneys, but, um, I think it's, I mean, the increase from a few months to twenty-five percent is just proof that this may, um, and, and thank you for thinking outside the box. Have we denied anybody yet when they gave you their video inspection?
Yes, ma'am, there has been some failures.
Okay, good.
Typically, it's the, the person using the device.
And that's what I was gonna ask, first of all, um, are they using their iPhones? Or do they have?
Yes, iPhone, Android, iPad, tablet, whatever, whatever can connect to, um, whatever can be uploaded into, off of, the information that can be uploaded off of the, the, and, and typically, any smart appliance can do that.
And they're not doing it where the, the, the video's too long? Because a lot of times, I want to send something and it's too long, so you haven't had that issue?
There's no length issue with it. It's just clarity, we have to make sure.
You're, you're not on, CJ? I hear it. Maybe just closer to you.
We have to make sure it's a very clear video.
Got it.
But we can see, we have to be able to perform our inspections to everything that's on that blue sheet.
Now, um, is, is Ignite a software program in yours? You kept saying Ignite, but it's not on here, it's inspectvideo@mymanatee.org. But is Ignite your software program for this?
That's not my specialty. I know that it's a depository. It's a, like a depository system, similar to, I guess Dropbox would be, or.
Okay.
Um, but we have a contract with them.
Okay.
They can storm for as long as we need them to storm, but our system, Acela, when we put it into Acela, it gets put into on-base for our public records retention.
Good.
It's for, one of the things that the state wanted was the public retention.
Mm-hmm.
They wanted that in the wording of the deck statement. So, we changed that. They will be kept, um, for as long as public, public records require. And as far as I know, everybody has said that storage is not a problem.
And the last question was, I wrote, um, do they get their permit emailed? Because we all want to have our, I keep all my permits in my strongbox at home, so I can always have proof.
If they check that box, then it will, yes, it will be an emailed certificate of completion.
You said they won't hear from them anymore after it's done, you don't have to follow up.
On a mechanical change-out, you never interact with a person, because you can pull that app, that permit online.
Right, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
The mechanical contractors, they go online, pull that permit, print the permit at their office, the inspection card, go to the job site, and it's all done with technology.
Because I always would get a copy of my permit, I don't trust them.
Ignite is just a, a software application that Mike and Susie and Paul found for us that would do this, because we're having problems, and I, you know. America's Funniest Video uploads millions of videos. How come we can't do it? So, you know, they got out there and they found this, and it's, it's, it's very reasonable, and, uh, it provides these guys the tools that they need.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Commissioner Whitmore, there is a, um, a line in the permit application process that if you check the box, it will notify you when the, when the inspection passes or fails. And most contractors do that, so, even though we don't have to call them, the system will let them know that it has passed.
Perfect, great. And then you're gonna expand, after we get comfortable with this, we may expand to other.
Yes.
Yes, we're currently working on the processes to expand.
Thank you.
And get approval.
Great job.
You know, and, and we've gotta be very careful what we look at, because I don't think the Building Official Association of Florida, or, I hate to use acronyms, BCAP, because I can't remember what that stands for, the State Board, not sure they'll ever go for this for structural issues and life safety in that case. And I'm not sure we would support that either, CJ. But, you know, other simple things that, um,
A door.
Can be done with a video, I mean, with, with an AC change-out, they look at five key components. Were those done? And, you know, you clearly show those on the video, and if they were done, that's what the inspector does. He walks in, looks at the outside unit, goes inside, looks, there, hup, 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 minute and a half, he's gone. And the customer says, "I stayed here all," Steve Johnson said, "I stayed here all day for this?" Yes, that's how long the inspection takes.
I think we, I think we all have said something similar at one time or other.
Yes, and, you know, the, we have so many of them. I mean, it was, it was monopolizing Pat's mechanical inspectors, and now they can do other critical need inspections.
I think we should take advantage of being the first in doing this in, in the country, so hopefully Sherry and our attorneys will.
We'll look at that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
There is, there is another video inspection process out there now, but it's live feed, so you still have to have inspectors sitting by the computer at the time to do the inspection. This allows us to pre-record them, send them to us, and we can review them at our, in our convenience.
Thank you. Good job.
Commissioner Servia.
Yeah, thank you. Wonderful presentation, and, uh, this is where the world is headed, right? So this is what technology brings to us, and it's great that we're taking advantage of it. You can see a doctor over a video, you can see a therapist over a video, we review red light runners through video. So it only makes sense that we're doing this, and I know that it's going to save our community a lot of bad things, like traffic. Gets cars off the road and it reduces the, um, carbon footprint, you know, all that gasoline we're burning. And it, um, you know, helps our employees to focus on other things and be more efficient. So it does conserve our county resources, and I'm also very happy to hear that life safety issues will not be done this way just yet. Because we do need to make sure those life safety issues, um, are checked and double-checked in every way. So here are my questions. I understand you've worked with the AC contractors, right? So they're all supportive of this, they've given you feedback, we've worked together, the BIA is involved, I'm guessing. So all of that great collaboration has resulted in what you have today, right? That's good. Audio, on the video, is audio included?
Yes, I encourage, I encourage the audio. Talk to me while you're doing your, tell me what you're looking at. The more they talk, the better it is for them.
Sure, it's clearer.
Because there's a lot of stuff they can explain.
Exactly. But, um, that's going to consume more data, um, and as long as we have a place where we're storing all of this data, that, that's the key, right?
Commissioner, typically, the, the videos are between two and four and a half, five minutes.
Right. Yeah.
It's not a lot of data.
Okay.
So, and I've been assured that even just Ignite will have no problem storing the data. But we back that up with Acela, we can store it in Acela and it can go to OnBase. So I've been told that storage is not an issue.
Okay, good. And contractors are using their cellphone.
Yes.
Is that right? So I think depending on the cellphone you have, it could be easier for some and harder for others, I'm guessing.
If you see some of the videos, you would be right.
Yeah.
Some, some of the contractors using iPads, you know, that's what got me thinking about this. When the guys were installing my new AC unit, they were filming with their iPad and taking pictures and video. And I asked them, what are you doing with this? I said, we keep that in your file.
Right.
In case anything goes wrong or anything happens, we can say, okay, did we miss it or, you know, what occurred there? It's a record, installation record.
Right.
I got, I called CJ sitting in my garage, hey, how come we can't do video inspections? And he said, do a video and bring it in to me, let me see it. So I did, still got it on my phone. And, uh, you know, that's where the idea took off and these guys got it and ran with it.
We use video all the time to look at storm drains and sewer pipes and, you know, it only makes sense that we would expand out this way. And I would expect that the cost of the permit will eventually, might go down. I don't know, but.
Yes, it should.
Should go down, right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Trace.
I just wanted to say congratulations to the team, and isn't it great that we work in a place that people can think outside the box, they're not afraid to say, we can do this better. And I think that's a great, for Manatee County and the administration, that this happens. Because that's not happening in all businesses, that people will just say, hey, we've been doing it this way for 50 years, we're going to continue doing it. But we can do it better, and that we have the people that are willing to try, so I just want to say, great job, guys.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baugh.
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations. You know, I mean, we, we talk about the problem trying to find good inspectors and, and you guys have really, um, you know, suffered with this now for a long, long time, and look at this. So it's a step in the right direction, congratulations. It's only the beginning, I'm sure, and, um, way to go, proud of you. Thank you.
And only because I'm a process nerd, I'm kind of curious about results-first spark plugs. So there's a lot of language in this slide, and it looks like it's coming from some sort of training you've had on results first. So what's a spark plug? Are these energy biased act, results orientation, personal responsibility, inclined to teams, are those steps that you've been trained in? I'm just really curious about this.
These are steps that are introduced, I believe, by Jerry Corrie.
Jerry. Oh, good. Okay, I've got your answer.
The team adopted them, and we ran with them.
And those are primarily, and John can chime in, those are primarily people that in the department have identified that they want to move forward with quick results-oriented solutions to problems and issues, and they work along across lines with the department. And I think you have some you've identified.
What's important is to allow people to do their basic core function and do it well. And what we do in Building Development Services is, Pat's great at inspections, plans review. CJ has been recognized as the best building official in the state of Florida. We've got a business services group in Building Development Services that they think outside the box, and they can come to this group and say, what if? And these people sit around a table and brainstorm. In fact, our remodel's being set up, so there's this environment where you can just sit around and play with squishy toys or whatever, and, and get those creative thoughts going with people that have the expertise. Lacey Pritchard of our business services group has embraced results first, as we all have. And she ensures that that's part of the program. So what? Is the term that's used, I'm doing this, so what? And that's how that, that came about, and we build on it every day. It's a concept that's, that's really good. The younger folks adapt to it quicker than I do. I'm getting there, I'm trying really hard.
You're doing good. Really?
I'll make it.
We're looking to expand even more, like even looking at drones, to use drones for inspections. Because, I mean, we've already had two inspectors fall off of roofs in, uh, in, in the past, to where, uh, one was pretty much disabled to the point to where he had to work as the plans examiner for his last 10 years. So this would eliminate our inspectors from having to climb on roofs. So we're kind of looking at that.
Great idea.
It's always important to look at doing things a different way, and it's not always been government's forte, so congratulations. Commissioner Baugh.
No, I already spoke, thank you.
I thought so, okay. All right, well, that's all we have, so great job, everybody. There was one question, so do we see a need to let people go because of this? Is there any good?
No.
Not yet.
And one, one of the reasons I say that is most of the mechanical, the residential mechanical inspectors are one or two family, which means that they can do plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and building, all four of those inspections in a residential environment. So we've got plenty of work to do, trust me.
All right. Okay, well, that's the last item we have. Ms. Barnot?
One of the things I'd like to do is recognize Commissioner Trace, Commissioner Johnson for coming out Saturday and, and purchasing swine from our 4H and FFA kids.
Don't do it again.
Thank you very much.
Getting some pork chops.
Oh, I would love to say I only, I would love to say I only got one.
We started the sale at one o'clock and it didn't take long for Commissioner Trace to, to get right in there, and I'm thinking, oh, she told me she was only going to buy two hogs and I'm, she's up to about five or six now.
It was horrible.
Oh, my God, she's got to work so a lot of trees.
You might have a problem, you might need to talk to somebody about your.
I technically, I technically don't even own them, I do not even own them at this time, they've already.
Most of Commissioner Trace's, uh, purchases were donated to needy organizations.
Guardian Angels, uh, Foster, through the Florida Baptist Foster Home that's right across from South Eastern Guide Dog.
Yes.
I'm going to tell you something.
Part of Guardian Angels. And they, and if anyone has it, they're looking for freezer space, because I was not the only one that donated that group.
Right. We, we had something occur at the fair, this was a record year for the entries into the swine division, we had 195
Yeah, I heard.
hogs in the show. And we, as fair directors, were concerned that, you know, how are we going to sell that many hogs? We sold every one of them. Our average price held about five and a quarter, 550 a pound, with the exception of one young man, Larry, little Larry. Joey Davis, y'all don't, might not know Joey, works in public, works as a professional auctioneer, and he auctions all of our animals off every year.
That's great.
And Joey, when he introduced this young man, when he came into the ring, he got choked up. And he couldn't hardly talk, because about a year ago, Joey had a kidney transplant.
I think it was, yes.
And, uh.
Major medical, though.
Major medical issues, and now he's back, little guy. He was showing his hog. And we were concerned that what if nobody buys his hog? First of all, he, he finished very high in the show, I think in the top 20, at 195. This community embraced him, and he got $25 a pound for that hog.
Oh. And it's, how much does a pig weigh, like 500 or 300 pounds?
It was about 265.
Whoa.
So, you know, you're.
Still a lot of money.
That's about $6,000.
Whoa.
But, uh, you know, this community did it, a local business here in this community, I guess it's okay.
Deadwiler.
Deadwiler's Market.
Oh, wow, good, good, good.
And there, there were, there were two guys, uh.
And his price is going up.
Fellow dog's a security company here in town. Uh, and Deadwiler's were going, I mean, it just, Joey started the bid at $3 and all at once, it's up to 10, 15, 20, 21, 22, 23, 20. It got to 25. But that's what this community is all about.
That's right, amen.
And it shows every year at the fair. So Saturday, we're having a steer sale at one o'clock.
Uh-oh.
Poor thing.
Buy freezer, buy steer. Tonight, the Veterans Parade starts at 6 o'clock. Uh, it will start at the north end of the fairgrounds and go to Veterans Hall. And, uh, we have a special guest, a young lady that was injured in battle, captured, and, uh, she'll be the keynote speaker tonight, looking forward to that.
Me too. All right, great, well, um, we can tell it's fair weather, maybe a little extreme, but it's always chilly, but makes you feel more motivated to eat all that great fair food when it's cold, so, uh, that'll be wonderful. I didn't get a chance to open, um, the, uh, agenda up for citizen comments, is there anybody that wanted to come forward and comment on any of the items we had today? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close citizen comments. I've got something I wanted to bring up, um, and other commissioners have anything they need to bring up?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I have one thing at the end, I should give everybody a name.
Okay, well, just before everybody leaves, I, you know, we, we got a, um, an email about Senate, Senate Bill 1302, the sovereign immunity, um, proposal. I am leaving after this meeting this afternoon, and I'm going to Tallahassee. I don't know, I do not have meetings set up with any legislators, but it's possible that I might run into some, and I just wanted to make sure that we are all equally concerned. Mickey, could you maybe make a comment? You, your staff commented that's the one on, um, increasing, you, you all sent out a, a email regarding that. Could you just make a comment, maybe we could get, in case I have an opportunity to see one of our legislators, I would like to be able to say something about that.
Well, the, the current sovereign immunity limits, dollar limits by statute are $200,000 per person and $300,000 per incident. This proposed legislation would reduce, or, excuse me, would increase the incident number, would increase, would increase it to an aggregate of a million dollars. And, um, so that, that's a significant jump, and then it would include a, uh, a, a consumer price index sort of, uh, sort of escalator, um, from year to year. And so it, it is, it is a dramatic increase in, uh, local government's potential liability for tort immunity. And it, it, it is so dramatic that it will just, it, it will change the landscape, uh, in, in, just in amazing ways. And it will make it much more difficult for us to, number one, negotiate settlements on these cases. It'll likely result in more cases going to trial. And so, so there are a lot of, there are just a lot of, uh, side effects that, uh, that can't be, uh, that can't be overstated. It's very, very concerning.
So I know, I know we can't take a vote here, but I, I just want to make sure that it is the consensus of this board, that this is bad for local government, so I could relay that to any legislators I see while I'm there.
Your self-insurance fund will, will have to be increased dramatically, uh, in order to cover, uh, these potential, you know, liability levels. Premiums, uh, on our excess insurance coverage that we purchase in the insurance marketplace will also go up. It's, it's, um, it's bad. It's bad for local governments.
Disaster, is what I've heard. Okay, well, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to run it by y'all before I said anything. Do you guys have any comments on that specifically? Commissioner Baugh.
You know I do. Actually, um, I'm glad that you had the opportunity to bring that up, because I was going to bring it up to you in our meeting this morning. I think it's a great idea, whenever one of us can go to Tallahassee or DC, and, uh, you know, I mean, I had it said to me when I was in DC that, you know, they love when we come up there, when somebody comes up there and they bring something forward, they, it, it puts it in the front of them again. You know, because there's so much going on in Tallahassee and DC that they kind of forget sometimes that we're around or what we stand for, or what we need. So personally, from me to you, I am gung ho for you, I think it's a great idea whenever one of us can go up there and get in front of our legislators.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And just to be clear, I'm going up there because I'm on the Greenways and Trails Committee, the, um, and that's, we have a meeting, it's our first meeting, and it's, uh, starts tomorrow and ends Thursday, and lucky me, gets to go up there when it's going to be 27 degrees, so.
I don't care why you're going, I think it's a good idea.
Just wanted to clarify, in case any of you want to give me any direction on that issue as well. I'm really there to learn, since this is my first meeting, but, um, I'm, I do believe I am there representing Manatee County in our desire.
You don't need our direction, you'll do just fine on your own.
Just clarifying.
Thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Whitmore.
And, um, thank goodness Galvano put, I was put on a board where I can do it all teleconference, so sorry, Betsy. Also, I worked, when I worked in the private sector as a risk manager at one of the hospitals, um, when we had an incident, it was nothing to hold between, and this was like 10 years ago, 15 years ago, to hold 500 to 3 million back in reserves. I know we aren't going to go this high in this legislation, but that's what the private sector has to do when they think there's a potential risk, so.
Well, we set aside reserves within our self-insurance fund for every claim that comes in the door.
I've asked, I, I know your risk management does, yeah. Um, on another issue, um, there, uh, there was a letter to the editor yesterday in the Braintree Herald from a David Daniels, stating that, um, of our guardian animal services, that we don't have, we haven't had a vet hired, and it's a dire situation there. And there was two animals that were put down, the two animals that were put down had major medical issues, I think like rabies or something, so, um, that was justified. But I want to rest assured, because I talked to, um, Jake this morning, and I think Sher, him and Sherry are going to put something out for you, but from what I'm understanding, and I was told this a while ago, we have locum tenens, or contract vets, three, uh, three, Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a vet comes in, he sees our animals, he doesn't do surgeries, and then on Thursday and Fridays, we have two vets that do do surgeries and they come in. So we are covered with medical care, and remember, we've never had vets until a few years ago. So, um, but this gentleman's information was incorrect, um, and I called just to verify. Also, if anybody wants, I will be going, the Animal Services Advisory Board, I think at 5:30 tonight. There was a fire, and it's been bothering me ever since I read about it, uh, and 21 people were displaced for their homes in Braintree on like 26th Avenue East or something like that. I remember when this happened to a friend of mine, and I got a, um, group together at the hospital, and we all got together and got her clothes, I mean, lost everything, and these people have lost everything. So, uh, I, I don't know who to call, I don't know, um, what we, I mean, I know we have people in this county, um, that, uh, would like to donate clothes, you know, I don't, some of them probably have kids, they need housing, so if there's any way we could get information, I don't know if it's in the city or in the county, if somebody could give us information.
We'll, we'll get clarified some information, we'd have to double-check on who's handling it.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I just don't want to start something when something's probably already being.
Well, get something out.
It said Red Cross was out, but, but that's just like, well, somebody may need a house, maybe there's, you know, that somebody can spare until they find something, or, you know, stuff like that, so. That's all.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that they wanted? I, I just wanted to say on that issue with, uh, that, and, you know, these issues, and then you see it online, and people start sending you emails, and how horrific this is. And I, it, we do need to clarify that our animals and animal services are seeing a vet, that, you know, and people say, well, well, why are, why didn't you do this? Why haven't you fixed this problem? Well, we did work really hard to get a vet, and that. Well, we did work really hard to get a vet and that vet left because conditions were so hard for this vet because of the way she was treated at Animal Services.
She was threatened.
She was basically run out of town, is what I understand. I admit, I only know what I read. I haven't talked to anyone specifically about this, but it's, you know, we have to be careful how we treat people and to have the facts before we start, um, putting our fingers to the keyboard. I know it's preaching to the choir, y'all have been there, but it's just really horrific how much people are willing to take what they think they know and write an opinion piece and without having real facts, so.
I think we've all seen it and been there and.
Yeah, and I really would appreciate maybe a memo or something clarifying where we are, what we're trying to do, what, what the coverage is, so that we have the facts to be able to represent the folks.
We're working on an update. I would add too, though, that, um, not every county has a vet on staff. That was an opportunity that we had at the time in the market and the right person initially to start, and so it worked out for us. It may not be the direction we go again, and many counties don't have that.
Right, and they can't get them, even Humane is short of that, they can't hire one, and it's really hard right now.
Yeah, and, and pay is always an issue, yeah, if you're supply and demand.
One of the key economic drivers, so that's what happens with people. Sheri, do you have more?
I asked, I asked Nick to come down and just if, is there, if there's any other direction you want to, um, update on the first topic that you brought up about the sovereign immunity, if you want to let him know, um, some, like we, we tease about the zone between the office up there, the elevator in here, you missed certain things, but, um, Nick, unless there's any other updates from the board, we'll make sure that you know what was discussed, it was brief, but.
And just so you know, Nick, I brought it up because I'm going to Tallahassee, I don't have meetings set up yet. I have contacted Martha and said, I'm going to be in town if you want to meet for a drink or dinner or something, um, but, uh, I probably will send an email to, uh, Will and, um, other, Tommy and say, hey, I'm going to be there. I know they're all busy, I, so I didn't really try to, um, set up meetings, but the one that I brought up that's not specifically on our platform is the sovereign immunity bill, Senate Bill 1302. It, it looks very, very bad for Manatee County and other local governments. I, I read what FAC said. FAC was kind of not really committed from what I read yet, though it seems really bad. So I asked if I could get a consensus here from the board that, yeah, we think it's bad and we need to tell our, um, our representatives that we think it's bad and we're very concerned about it. So that's why I brought it up to get a consensus and everybody said, yeah, it's bad. So that's where we're at. You have anything else?
Just to say that, um, you know, I, I wouldn't say that FAC is uncommitted. They, they sent that email to all the administrators, lobbyists, and county attorneys to make everybody aware that it was on the radar. I think that, that initial email also said that there was no House companion bill to the legislation, but it was something that FAC is monitoring closely, and so you can trust that they're giving it, they're all. My initial reaction to, um, the summary and then having read the, the bill myself, it does fall under the board's, uh, universal opposition to preemption and unfunded mandates. Mickey and his staff were able to articulate opposition a lot better than I could, and if the direction was to formalize that in a letter, I'll collaborate with Mr. Palmer and we can get that up there, or if it's just for informal conversations, it sounds like you're set.
Yeah. Again, we're in a work session, so I can't, we can't make any motions or anything, so I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, what we know, and, and you've added to what, what I know. I only know what I've read in emails, so.
So there's no companion yet.
Uh, Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, and Nick, I'm glad to hear you say that because, you know, even if right now it didn't have a house, you know, a companion bill, that doesn't mean anything. We saw that last year with 7103, that moved pretty quickly once it kind of got legs under it. So, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea for this board to move forward to do a letter stating that, you know, we are concerned about it, not looking forward to it, and don't want it to happen necessarily, and, um, address it now before it does get legs, because it very well could, easily.
Yeah, you'd have to bring that letter back to the board for, uh, board approval, but I, I hear what you're saying.
We can bring it back.
After we could do it at the land use meeting on Friday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. Rules, 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 okay. Thank you, anything else you wanted to?
No, thank you.
Add? All right, anything, Sheri?
I have two other, just real quick updates. One, just as a reminder, there's no afternoon work session today. We have the property maintenance code scheduled, we'd like to do a little bit of additional work on that and come back to you, but we will find a spot, um, within the next two to three months, so we will not delay it lengthy. And, um, two, um, at noon, we have a little sendoff from Melissa Matisco and, um, we'd like to invite this board and at 1:00, the rest of the, um, the rest of the county to come by and wish Melissa off on her new private endeavors. Thank you.
Going to miss her.
Miss her a lot.
We need to contribute.
Very, very, very talented.
She'll do good.
Drone flyer.
And a great photographer and videographer.
Her photography talents. Okay, all right, well, without any further, uh, agenda, we are adjourned.